And there was kind of ninety dollars on the.
I just was curious what they were doing right in that.
And they extended the. There there'll be a there'll be a stoplight. Cementing can get over the road.
Yeah, we're just trying to look at it. Two nights came by us and she goes.
Take him right?
Right there.
How you doing?
I didn't get your letter.
Yeah, but it's not down either. I've been busy all day. That phone calls. Okay, well, see, I just tell them that. Did you sign? Hi. It's the mirror.
I'm glad. Thank you for dropping out. So if you reference it, they'll know you're.
I'm trying. Uh, that's could be.
I just wanted to see you got here. Okay. I know. I'm probably trying to tell you. Yeah.
So you had a full day Saturday, huh? Bet you blew up the day and the rest of the day. Well, hi Kathy.
Well, I think.
As we said. That's a fundraising project. Some building. Really, it's a big, terrible survive. That's one percent. Back here, Doug.
I agree with this whole. I need to.
Right inside.
I'm not a fool.
The second one is very.
This must be church. Everybody sits in the back.
That's why you did here early.
I I take your problems. I take your issue. You can have that. Oh, no, that doesn't look fun at all. No.
All right, it is six o'clock. We'll call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for Monday, October twenty fourth. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America. The Republic of Richard Sands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Council, the first item on our agenda tonight is the agenda review and adoption. We'll look for a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. We have no one signed up for open forum public comment tonight. Uh, on to approval of city council minutes. We have three items from October tenth, regular city council and two special meetings. Would take a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve October tenth, regular city council minutes and the two special meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Those carry. Item six is consent agenda. We have items A through E. We will pull item E for council member Cole. Are there any other items? Seeing none would look for a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda items A through D. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Those items carry. Item E.
Uh, just a couple of quick questions for staff on this. In in reading through that, it looks like we're getting, we're currently leasing two towers out to Verizon. For seventy-three thousand fifteen dollars per year. Is that correct? And then the new amount would be fifty thousand four hundred per year. Uh, so it's a difference of twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen per year. Is there a reason why we wouldn't go up instead of down?
Yeah, we can certainly challenge the lease agreement. It hasn't been signed at this point. The change in the price is mainly due to longevity. Now that we're signing with them for nearly thirty years now, they came down on the price on an annual basis. For the longevity in turn. But if it's something you'd like to challenge, to maybe get to more of a level that we're receiving now as a starting point and then being able to negotiate. The inflator every year, uh, we can certainly bring that to the table. But after speaking with the specialist at SEH who does work on these antenna agreements across cities among Minnesota, he said, we were in the market. Of what they were asking and that our agreement now is a bit above the market. So what they were asking wasn't unreasonable, but something I can look into further.
Um, you know, just knowing what I know about that issue is it it seems that, you know, there can be, whether it's a private landowner or the city, um, it can be kind of all over the board. Um, I would say if anything, it shouldn't go down. It should go up.
Sure.
What we were paying plus three percent. Um, longevity shouldn't have anything to do with it, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
And that's a little bit of a challenging subject in that we don't allow individual towers within the city, correct?
Correct.
They're only allowed on our water towers. So I I think there's some infrastructure savings there, whether they're realizing that, um, in this contract, previous contracts, but I wonder if we can compare like cities to like cities. That have that ordinance in play that don't allow. I don't know. I.
Yeah, it's it. What I know about that market, it it shouldn't go down. It and they'll they'll tell you what, whatever, but, um, I think that if we could at least ask for the same amount.
Sure. Yep.
And then if they want longevity, that's great. Or if we want it, that's great.
Okay.
A part of our contract with Verizon is multiple antennas, not just one.
Correct. Yep, they're looking to renegotiate both antennas, one on our north tower and one on our east tower, I believe it is. Um, it's coming to an end at the end of twenty twenty-four or is it twenty twenty-five? Um, so they wanted something longer term in place before they get to the end of that current contract.
What was the length of the current contract?
Oh, gosh.
Five years?
Yeah, I think it automatically renews every five years, but it began in the early two thousands or late nineteen nineties. And it's just kept rolling the five-year terms. And now that final five-year term will end either twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five.
Was this in conjunction with the mini towers that are on the lights?
No, this is totally separate from that.
Is there a time essence of if we were to, um, make a motion to ask you to renegotiate, is there a essence of time that? We need to sign this on or is it still an open negotiation?
Still open in negotiation. Um, as I mentioned earlier, their current contract, the last term doesn't end until the end of twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, so it does allow us time to renegotiate and go back to the table.
Council, we'll look for a motion on the direction we'd like to take this one.
I can go ahead and just send, make a motion to table this and bring it back to our finance director, Rob, and just see if he can go back to Verizon and renegotiate that.
Yep.
We have a motion to table item six E for further negotiation. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
It's a motion and second. Any other questions or deliberation? Seeing none, would call for a vote. All those in favor to table consent item E for further discussion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That item carries. On to our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on Skelton-Daylor project. Um, and before we turn it over to April for a kickoff on this, uh, those in the audience wishing to testify tonight, we ask that, uh, when the time allows, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Um, and then we would ask it to be on topic, which is the assessments. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Um, before we open up the public hearing, just a little background. Um, so the final assessment for the Scout and Daily Improvements Project, um, the project includes a new three-lane roadway. It also included sanitary sewer improvements. Water maiming improvements, storm sewer treatment and drainage, uh, trail lighting, and then also pedestrian system improvements. Um, the assessments are following the four twenty-nine process, um, which allows the city to assess properties for the benefit of the project. Uh, for this particular project, the city did complete appraisals on each and every property. The appraiser set a amount for the value of the property before the project and then, uh, an appraised amount after the project. That difference is the benefit that these projects would have received from the project and is what is reflected in the, um, assessment worksheet that's in front of you this evening. The total project cost for Skelton-Daylor is, uh, just under seven million four hundred and seventy-two thousand. And the project includes special assessments in forty-six thousand seven hundred. Um, those assessments, if not paid, can be paid over a fifteen-year period at a four percent interest. The project also includes a large amount of deferred assessments, um, which would become due, uh, within thirty years or once the property is developed. Uh, the deferred assessment amount is two million five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Uh, with that, I would happy to answer any questions you may have before we open the, uh, public hearing.
Thank you, April. Any questions prior to open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the assessments for Scout and Daylor, please step forward.
Hello, my name is Mark Sky. Uh, my home address is six forty Maywood Drive, St. Cloud, Minnesota. My property, uh, I'm a partner in Sky Properties, which is part of the Scout Drive and Daylor Drive project. I would like to let the city council know that our, uh, partnership is opposed to the six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar assessment on our property. Uh, we, uh, you indicated that in a letter dated September nineteenth, which I, uh, received the letter on Thursday, October thirteenth. Several weeks after the date of the letter. I think you have a copy of my letter. Uh, Anna said you received it there. I'd like to just go through that if you're okay with that. After reviewing that assessment worksheet that, uh, April, uh, referred to, and first of all, thanks to April and Rob and Anna for visiting with me over the course of the week. So. If you look at that assessment, I call attention to our property, um, is being assessed at six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It is the largest, uh, assessment of the property or of the of the entire project. It constitutes twenty-five point three five percent of the total assessment. Property immediately across the forty-foot easement of our property with his, which is belongs to the Crookton family, has an assessment of four hundred and thirty thousand, the next highest assessment on your worksheet. That constitutes, uh, sixty sixteen point six four percent of the total. And if you combine those two properties, a quarter-mile length, which is about twenty percent of the project length, it comes to our assessment is forty-two, almost forty-two percent, forty-one point nine nine percent. Uh, we feel this is entirely, uh, when I say we, I mean our part, our partnership, Sky Properties, uh, feels this is unjustified in a disproportionate ratio. Read your appraisers' report for the assessment and it is based upon his, uh, professional opinion. And as April indicated, it is based upon his assessment before the property, before the project and after the property. I don't believe that our property had the highest benefit involved in this project at all. Our assessment and the Crookton assessment both seem to be outrageous, um, amounts. Visiting with April, she indicated a state statute. I don't have the number, but a state statute that allows the city to, um, basically assess property in any fashion that they wish. And I also like to let the council know that part of that state, uh, statute indicates that the assessment needs to be fair and equitable. And I find both the assessment method and the, uh, assessment amount to be unfair and inequitable. When I asked about the project cost to the city, which April came up with here, I did my own, um, estimate and she had indicated that the assessment would be the same whether the city received a bond or not. I went through my own calculations after reviewing some of the city council meetings and you can see my calculation. I came up with a net, what I called a net cost to the city. Approximately one point four million four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, this apparently is about, uh, I'm off, I used a total cost of this short of seven million. So I would imagine our net cost is close to a million nine in round figures. A million nine in our assessment is two point, two million five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars or approximately with their new number, a million four over the total project cost. When asked about the difference where it would go, I was told that the assessment goes into the improvement fund to be used for projects that, uh, don't receive any bonding. I feel no need to support the next project, um, with our, with this assessment at all. Um, I believe each project should stand on its own. And the city, if I understand the assessment right, we're going to have it deferred for twenty years, possibly another ten. If none of this property involved in this project sells, there'll be no cash collected, um, at this point. So how can it be used for another project? I don't understand that that thinking, um, especially there'll be no money coming in until it's sold or voluntary payment possibly. Okay? My dad once said, if you complain, you should have a solution. And I'd like to propose a solution. Um, I'd be interested in working with the assessment, um, being equal to the net, net cost to the city. And that being assessed to the landowners based upon a linear foot basis. I think that would be a fair and equitable, um, assessment for the landowners and the city will eventually cover, recover its cost twenty years down the road. It will, it will recover its cost. The other concern I have is our property will also be affected by the, um, proposed widening of Fiftieth Avenue eventually, which I think is maybe moving up the list of projects. And our our forty acres can't stand another hundred and fifty, or six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar assessment, uh, for that quarter mile of that project. So, um, I just think that would be, um, all total, I'm guessing on what that assessment might be, but bear with me. I'm thinking it would be at least that. Apologize for the lengthy letter. Thank you for reading it, uh, that sort of thing. And, uh, I'd just like to know that this or feel that this method of assessment is unfair and not equitable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Um, and just to recognize, we we have received the letter. We know it's going through, I think it's the four twenty-nine process. And so I, at this point, we need to, as a council, let that play out and I think that involves a third party to review.
That's the four twenty-nine process? Okay. And who's the third party?
So the essentially a third party would be a court process. If you file an appeal and pending what happens tonight after the, after the public hearing would be, um, filing an appeal and a court motion and then allowing that process to work out.
Through the courts.
Right. Yep. Is that what you were referring to, Ryan?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
So you've started that process already?
Uh, no, your letter, uh, to Anna that was shared with us actually was the first, is the first step in that process.
Okay.
So your appeal initiated that process and I think there's a letter shared, uh, shared with all property owners as to how that process works.
That was part of your letter to me?
Correct.
So.
So our ask would be to continue to follow those steps as outlined in the letter. Am I accurate in saying that, Anna?
Yep. The first of which being filing the initial, initial appeal with the clerk.
Okay, so that can't be settled. This can't be settled without that process.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I was not aware of that. So, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the Scout and Daylor? Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Deb Wyrock. Um, I live at three two three nine six fiftieth avenue. Um, I'm part of the Crookton family partnership. I have a whole letter too that I submitted to Anna and you guys have it, but. I don't even see any need to read it because Mark did such a good job. Um, we have two parcels though that are impacted. One is. Got four hundred and thirty thousand dollar assessment against it and the other one has a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar assessment and. I guess sum it up in a nutshell, we believe too that it's kind of unfair that. The way it was assessed, you know, with the, the appraisers. Amount before and after the project, you know, and and like Mark said, why not appraise, assess it as a linear, linear, the linear cost of it. So because in the future, it's going, you know, going to be hard to sell the land if we have to pay all these big assessments against it. So, and everything Mark said, I. Double that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And for confirmation, we did receive your letter as well, which initiates the process. Anyone else wishing to testify on the Scout and Daylor assessments? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on Scout and Daylor assessment? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Council, um, questions? Thoughts, comments? We do have two that have, um, submitted. Is that total for this project?
I just, I can start if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, one of the most controversial things we have to do is city councils deal with assessments. I wish we could just get rid of them, but it it's just. It it happens everywhere in our country. That's just the way we do it. Um, and I would, I would tend to agree that, um, these need to be looked at. And and I would hope that through this process, the four twenty-nine process, that we can relook at it. So. Yeah, there is a very, very legal, strict way of doing this and and hopefully we can get that done for you.
April, can you provide a little clarity on the pre-verse, post appraisal and kind of what that difference comes from?
Yeah, absolutely. So the four twenty-nine process, like I said, allows the city to assess for the benefit to the property. So in order to determine that, the appraiser, um, found comparable comparables for, uh, these properties and did an evaluation. What the product, uh, property is worth before the road project as is, and then what it would be worth with the road utilities, everything being in it. That difference is that benefit, um, which then the city, um, can assess to the property owners. As Mark mentioned, there are different ways that the city's assessment policy allows assessments to be assessed. As Mark mentioned, there are different ways that the city's assessment policy allows assessments to be assessed to property owners. One is a linear foot or a square foot or an each. Type of assessment, the other one is by appraisals, so. It, it's very much a, a typical and standard way. The reason appraisals were done right away in this situation is because of the large size and irregular kinda shaped. Parcels that were involved with this project.
April, is it fair to say that? In a new road, that would be the appraisal process versus a reconstruct, we might do linear or other options?
It's much more common to do the linear foot or each on a reconstruct. Because we had to acquire right of way for this project, we were doing appraisals anyway. And so the city went ahead and got those same appraisals to determine that benefit. It's. On a linear foot, if there's one that's contested, the next step would be appraisals. So you're almost taking that next step right away with getting the appraisals upfront.
I know Mark mentioned the, the, or either Mark or Deb mentioned the twenty years plus ten, I've always heard it as thirty. Is there? Should people be thinking about it as thirty, or is there something they would need to do at year twenty to invoke the extra ten, or can you?
Yeah, for the deferred assessment, it becomes due at thirty years. So you could wait the thirty years and pay it all right at that thirty years, or you can back it out and make some payments starting earlier than that at ten years. Per se, that's I think where the twenty years comes from, is that accurate?
Yeah, it's essentially, i- it's a thirty year at the twenty year mark. They can make the final ten years as payments. And can work with the city on those final ten years as a, a payment process instead of all of it being due at that thirty year mark. So it's twenty plus ten because of that payment process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just one point of clarification. If they parcel that property, that's a lot of acreage, if they smell, they sell smaller portions of that, does that evoke? The purchase point or the payoff of that, or is it by percentage?
So the way that these, these will be recorded to the individual parcel ID. And then when they go through the plating process would get called due at that point. We have had scenarios, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, we've had, we've had scenarios where we've had to. Reallocate or figure out like a per acre amount and renegotiate and re-record or, or. Just to help the development move along in a scenario like that, so that's something we're, we're familiar with. We've had to work with developers on that in the past where a certain portion of it gets paid, the rest gets re. Basically re-deferred to any amount that doesn't get annexed in. So it's kind of a case by case. It is tied to that whole parcel though, so anything that happens on that parcel, we'll call that due. And then it's to our development team and our legal team to renegotiate what that looks like.
We have an example of that over on Lee Sock Drive, if I recall, there's a parcel over there.
I was just gonna mention that I think it's always challenging, as Jeff said, in these situations. And I think it's, it's hard to see value in a road and infrastructure. But I think our hope as a city is that the, the value of the property is increased as a result of those improvements.
Council would look for a motion on the final assessment worksheet and resolution. We have a motion to approve the final assessment worksheet and resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, there's a large flag going around. Any other questions, concerns before we call a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of the, to approve the final assessment worksheet and resolution signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Next on the docket for public hearings is County Road One.
Evening, may your members of the council, second final assessment hearing for tonight, it's County Road One Improvements Project. This project is being done by Stearns County for the roadway construction in the city of Sartell. Is also doing improvements to the sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer share, sidewalks, trail. Lighting, riverbank restorations, pedestrian improvements. And some other improvements within the Watab linear and Veterans Park. Again, the assessment is following the four twenty-nine process. The following items within the project are being assessed, and that's the water main and water services, sanitary sewer and sewer services. The city's portion of the storm sewer and storm water treatment. The county's responsibility for the roadways back a curb to back a curb, so any roadway improvements outside of that. Would also be the being assessed minus what is not being assessed is the pedestrian trail. The pedestrian bridge improvements, the lighting improvements, the river overlook and the improvements within Veterans and Watab Park. The total estimated cost for the project is seven million one hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The proposed assessments within the worksheet tonight are for nine hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. Would like to note that the assessment worksheet in front of you does reflect an eight thousand dollar or eight percent. The estimated market value cap for residential parcels only. That is something that the city has done on, on recent reconstruct projects, so reflecting that in this assessment worksheet. Also wanna call your attention to a couple parcels within the corridor. After reviewing these with staff, we would recommend some adjustments to the assessment amounts on these parcels. The first two being parcel one and parcel two on the map you have in front of you. These parcels are located at the corner of Sartell Street and County Road One. We would recommend removing these from the assessment roll. They were included on the assessment roll because their address is Riverside Avenue. However, we don't believe that these parcels are receiving any benefit as their access and utilities. Are not off of County Road One, they're off of the side streets and the alleyway. So we don't believe that there is a benefit to these properties that would warrant an assessment at this time. The other parcel we'd like to bring to your attention, we did receive a letter from a property owner at seven oh four Riverside Avenue. They own two parcels adjacent to each other, you can see on the screen, one larger parcel with their home on it. The other parcel is that small sliver which would not be a buildable lot on its own. Because of the way the assessment policy is set up, they would receive two assessments for these properties. The larger property would receive or is receiving the eight thousand dollar cap. The smaller is receiving an eight percent, the estimated market value cap. They are requesting that these two parcels be treated as one parcel. And receive just the eight thousand dollar cap. Wanted to bring this one to your attention, I think staff could see this one going either way. Because it is technically two parcels, there are other properties where parcels were combined. In order to, to receive the, the one assessment. There are other properties adjacent to this where the parcel actually is located on both sides of the road. And they're receiving one assessment, so would like to get further consideration from council on this particular parcel moving forward. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have before opening up the public hearing.
April, quick one I have, if you go back one slide. So what I heard you say is on the left lot fifty is equal to seven oh four, is that right? Is that the correlation?
So the blue highlighted and the red highlighted parcels on the map adjacent are parcels fifty-one and fifty.
Yeah, and so, to me, that's logical, that makes, that makes sense on that. What I wanted clarification on was then forty-one. Which is the small sliver, that's tied across the street, you said?
Correct.
And they are already wrapped under one residential max of eight thousand?
Correct.
And so. I guess easier way to ask this is, do we have any other non-buildable lots? That don't fall under the adjacent home cap?
Forty-one that you pointed out and then also forty-two, which is showing on that map, and forty where you've got.
Those are the only three non-buildable in the project and those fall under?
To my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any other questions for April before we open the public hearing?
And those are all being treated as one.
So per, per homeowner? Parcel forty-one is two pieces located on either side of the road, they are. One parcel in the county's system. Same thing with forty and forty-two. This particular owner owns the two parcels adjacent to each other which are being treated as two separate parcels, cuz that's how they're showing.
Right, and there's no water sewer in the smaller parcel?
Correct, there is no water sewer, it's not buildable, so we didn't stub out a service to them either.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Conceivably that someone could buy all those parcels, combine it. Probably with setbacks, they couldn't even, still unbuildable, right?
Hard to say not adding up the area.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? You talked about lots one and two off of Sartell Street. Yeah, one and two. They would not, you're requesting they not be part of the County Road One. They would be at some point if we were redoing Sartell Street, correct?
Correct.
In both parcels?
Or the, and or the alley that they are receiving utilities from.
Okay.
But on that, typically though, when you live on a corner lot, you, you, if you're doing both streets, you're gonna get double assessed on that, right? Isn't that typical with a corner lot?
It's not exactly double the assessment policy, it's a hundred percent one length and fifty percent the other length.
But it looks like they could be possibly assessed four times. That wouldn't be good.
The assessment policy also addresses that if there are improvements on three sides of a parcel and how that would split up mathematically.
I think this one would be, would be different had it be level, right? For those that know this parcel, it's elevated, you're not able to access, there's no access on County Road One, period, correct?
Zero access, and that's, I showed the picture up there as well, I don't. If you can recall, there's a large granite retaining wall that vertically separates these parcels from County Road One.
Seeing no additional questions, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on County Road One Final Assessment Hearing? Please step forward. Reminder to state your name and address for the record. And we would ask, this is not a traffic discussion, this is a assessment policy discussion.
Hi, my name's Dan Eiler, I live at one thousand two Riverside Avenue North. And I'm just curious, so I was talking with a neighbor about it, and then I read the letter today on the four percent interest. I get the assessment, I guess, guess, I get that things need to be improved. I guess my question and further clarity would be, isn't this taxpayer dollars funding this project? So like, I've already paid taxes to fund the project. And now all of a sudden, I'm getting hit with a eight thousand dollar loan at four percent that I didn't ask for. Again, I, I get improvements, but I'm just wondering why the four percent, when we've already paid our taxes, is what my neighbor and I were talking about. Like, we've already paid the taxes to fund the project and now we're having to pay four percent interest to further pay for it. So I guess I'd just like some clarification.
Sure.
About that, it doesn't make sense to us at all.
And, and I'll break that into maybe two questions, two parts. One, I'll ask April to touch on what's being assessed versus what the general tax base is covering as part of the project? Cuz there's distinct differences there, and then I'll ask Rob if you could hit on the. Four percent aspect of it. Thanks.
Yes, the question is clarification on what is being assessed versus what the public?
Yeah, the, if I could summarize, it's, hey, I, I pay taxes today, that's helping fund the project, but now I have an assessment. If we can maybe talk through what's your seven million dollar project and what's being assessed versus what is the general tax base covering?
Yeah, absolutely, so based on the city's assessment policy, the roadway improvements that is the city's responsibility. So anything outside the curway, that'd be driveway restoration for the most part, turf restorations, that sort of thing. Those are being assessed at thirty-five percent of the cost. So thirty-five percent of that is being assessed to the property owners, the rest of it is being covered by the city. Sanitary sewer and water main is also being assessed at thirty-five percent of the cost. And then your sanitary sewer services and water services are, those costs are assessed a hundred percent back. And then your storm sewer costs are assessed at thirty-five percent of the project cost. Now, keep in mind with the eight thousand dollar cap or eight percent of the estimated var- market value. In a lot of cases, that has greatly reduced the total assessment mount. Most assessments would be in the range of ten to twenty-five thousand dollars. If they were not hitting that cap that is reflected in the assessment worksheet.
And to add on and correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think part of the sentiment is it's a seven million dollar project. The broad tax base is covering a large majority of it, right? But at, at a county level, cuz again, it's a county road. What the city is assessing for is thirty-five percent of the underground infrastructure that's going to the homes.
Correct, so the total project cost that's up on the screen right now is the city's cost of the project that does not include the county's roadway cost. And of that, just over seven million, that nine hundred and two thousand is what's being assessed, that small portion of it.
Sorry, does that answer that question? Wanna make sure, I, I think others probably have the same. If I, if I could ask you just to come back up, just, there are people. Watch this on a Monday night?
I understand that, you know, we're only being assessed of like thirty-five percent or whatever of the project for. The water and sewer, I guess, my neighbors and my complaint, and still kinda cloudy, is. Didn't taxpayers, as, as a whole, haven't we already kinda funded the coffers, like? The, the project's already been funded by tax paying money, we've already paid into the city for property taxes, various things. And so that money's been allocated to fund this project. And we're happy to pay the eight thousand dollar assessment, but now it seems like we've already paid the initial taxes to cover the funds to begin with. And we get that we gotta, you know, cough out a little bit of our own because it's benefiting our house and not, you know, someone up on Seventh Street. But we're just confused about the four percent that we have to pay on top of it, you know, as far as the interest part, that's kinda where we're.
Understood, yeah, absolutely, and I think our staff can hit on that and, and maybe walk through the capital improvement and how we.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as he was talking in relation to the, the whole pot of taxes. Cuz I think, I understand what you're saying. I wish I had our, our levy presentation here, but when you pay property taxes, at le- at least the city's portion. A breakdown of those taxes, I'd say sixty percent, seventy percent is, is public safety, so your law enforcement and fire safety. And, and actually, the, the road portion of it, we have developed a capital improvements plan to which. We give a, a portion of our levy, this, the previous years, it's been right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our. Overall levy, which is seven million, which goes to a street fund, so it's actually a, a really minimal amount, we're working to increase that amount. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that of the total taxes we pay to the city, there's actually a, a pretty small amount. That goes to the actual road infrastructure projects. A, a large portion of those taxes are for, for public safety, for. We do, you know, whether it be it's public works and employees and, and things like that, but not necessarily the road infras- infrastructure projects. So hopefully that, that whole pie, I think, is what you're referring to, and so hopefully that, we do have a chart, we just don't have it. Up right now, but our final levy hearing, which will come up in December, Rob does a really nice job of portraying the exact percents of what that total. Tax amount is and how it's split up between different departments. So, so hopefully that helps explain that pie piece, and then the interest rate, Rob, I think, provides some clarity on, on how we determine that. It's set based of our, based on our assessment policy, and then we are paying debt. We are paying debt on this project with, which has interest tied to it, which then helps determine the interest rate that we then pass on. But I'll let you provide clarification on that.
Yeah, just a little more clarification on that. So in order to finance the project, we had to issue bonds, which is debt. Um, that we have to pay back. And per our assessment policy, we take the average interest rate of the debt that we pay for the project. And assess a little bit more. It's not clear on how much more, but. The average interest rate for the projects was three point six percent and we're going four percent. Um, as the assessment interest rate, which is similar to our projects in twenty twenty. Uh, so we wanted to be consistent amongst the projects over the past few years.
So in layman's terms for myself. We go out as a governmental entity in bond, which is taking out a loan to do the project, right? Um, and as part of that calculated, how, how do we pay off this loan or the bond to fund the project? A portion of that is of the assessment. And that's why we have that initial assessment hearing to set those assessments. Because, um, that portion will be paid. Again, April talked about thirty-five percent, uh, multiple thirty-five percent. Being part of that and then capping out at eight thousand per residential. Beyond that, does shift the burden onto the rest of the, uh, residents, property owners of the city of Sartell. Accurate?
Yeah, so when we are charging the four percent, it's essentially a pass through of the interest that we're paying on the debt. If that, if that captures it. Um, and then we will make those debt payments as a part of our levy going forward. And so if you do come to the final assessment hearing, which is really riveting information, um. It breaks down all the different debt payments that we levy for. And so, um, you can see on there that, that. We have to then compensate for that at some point. Loan payments essentially, like you would own a car.
Sorry, we're, we're taking this slow just because as Councilmember Cole talked about, this is. Uh, probably one of the more challenging aspects of our role as, as elected officials is. Um, setting out some of these assessments. So wanna make sure there's a full understanding of them. Absolutely. Anyone else wishing to testify? On the County Road One?
Yes, my name is Victoria Godd. I live on four oh one Riverside Avenue. Um, the assessment I understand on my property was eight thousand dollars. Um, but my, the only thing I got out of it was a new water meter. And a water line. My sewer goes out the side and out the back.
And, um, address one more times?
Can he come up here with?
Yeah.
Thank you.
She, her sewer is off the side street. And the only thing she gained from this whole project, and there's on- other underlying issues that can't be discussed now. But is the, is a water line and a water meter. Everything she has is on the side street. And then she gained a lighted crosswalk, a light pole and a big control box in her yard that now this city is gonna assess her on. How is that fair to her?
That I knew nothing about.
Sure. Can you talk about, uh, four oh one, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, your assessment amount was, um, calculated for the roadway improvements outside the curb. Um, and then also for water main and water service that was replaced with the project. Um, and then the s- city's portion of the storm sewer. Um, there is no sanitary sewer running in county run in front of your property. Um, you're correct about that. That was not calculated into your assessment. Um, the total assessment would have been, uh, just over eleven thousand dollars. You hit that eight thousand dollar cap. Um, and so are being assessed at eight thousand dollars.
So how does the assessment work then for all the utilities that the city put in their yard? Had a different hearing or should we approach that in a different way?
So those would be within the right of way.
There's other issues with that too, but that's not to be discussed, I, to my understanding at this meeting.
Sure.
But it hurt the value of the property. The real estate agents have already said that. So how do you assess somebody when you put a big control box and a lighted crosswalk in their front yard of a corner lot down the river?
So the, um, pedestrian improvements and crosswalk systems are not being assessed to the property owners. Um, that is part of the cost that the city is, um, covering.
But it is going to affect the property and the owner. Not to mention the other issue that you're aware of.
Yeah, I, um, I think we hear you loud and clear. Outside of the, uh, understanding of how the assessment happened, I think hopefully we cleared up that it is not part of your sanitary sewer. Um, that that's on a different road. And I think the, uh, as with the others, that any objection would need to go through the, uh, four twenty-nine process. To resolve.
So how do I go about doing that?
So, uh, when you see, when you receive their, your letter regarding the assessments, um. At, in that letter, it referenced the beginning portion of that process. So that's what, um, you saw in the earlier hearing was how to initiate that. So, and, and if you guys wanna give me a call tomorrow or, or, um, I don't know if you have the letter with you, but. Um, oh, perfect. So you, it's.
Hand that to her.
Yeah, yep.
I need to drop the letter to you?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not allowed to give legal advice, but yeah, it's written, i- it, if you read that, follow that process. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the County Road One assessment?
My name is Diana Schmidt and I live at six thirteen Riverside Avenue North in Sartell. I had a question about the letter that you sent. On the back of that letter, it says no partial prepayment, but then, um, on the other side, it said the city council authorized. The partial prepayment of assessments prior to the certification of the assessment or the first installment thereof, the city auditor. I don't understand that. Is there or isn't there the possibility of doing prepayments on it so that you don't have a full eight thousand dollars?
As you read it, I don't understand that either. So we'll have staff answer that.
Yes, I'd have to reference the assessment policy, but we do allow prepayments to pay down the principal before it is assessed to property taxes. So I believe there would be a follow-up letter, April, or there wouldn't be at this point?
There should be, and there's dates in that letter. So you are able to make a partial prepayment before it is certified with the county. I don't, I can look it up. Uh, I think it's November fifteenth is the date. Um, after that, after it's certified with the county, then those partial prepayments are not. Um, allowed throughout the year. It would be kind of on an annual basis before they're certified.
Okay, so if we make a partial payment before November fifteenth of this year, we can do that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening. My name is Mark Johansson. Um, my address is eight forty-five Terry Lane in Sartell. Which isn't close at all to, uh, the County Road, um, improvement area. However, I am the treasurer of the, uh, Riverside Evangelical Presbyterian Church. Um, and that is on County Road One. I submitted a letter just this morning. I don't know if that got included with the packet for you. The, uh, a- and received some clarification already this evening in hearing some things, and I appreciate that. Uh, number one is that the, uh, um, whereas as a general public, we heard the seven thousand dollar. Uh, number about a year and a half ago, and it's come out to about eight thousand dollars, which is great. Um, my concern and, and, uh, and the concern from the, from the church and from the, what we call our, our session, our governing body. Is that, uh, we took and identified, we have approximately three lots. As far as lineal foot goes, it's three property lots as our church is located on. And, uh, so we were looking at that being in that range of about twenty-one thousand dollars for assessment. Our assessment, when we received our letter, it was thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty, fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents. That's about a seventy-eight percent increase over what we were expecting. We certainly, uh, we have, are in nu- in a unique situation as a five oh one C three. We typically are not, um, subject to property taxes. And so even the assessments is something we don't normally see and get from the, uh, from the, uh, uh, city, county or, or state. So we are addressing that. We recognize that. The aspect of it, uh, increasing that amount is what has caught us by surprise. We just had our meeting. Um, uh, our, our session meeting and said, we'd like to at least get an understanding of the reasoning behind that increase. From what we expected in the range of twenty-one thousand to thirty-eight thousand. Um, and if it's an area of, um. Property value, because we are not residential, saying, oh, you've got a property market value has gone up by that much, so we're gonna assess it there. We have some issues with that, and as I laid out here. Our property was deeded to us a hundred and twenty-five years ago by some founding. Family members of Sartell, of the city of Sartell. And within that deed, it states that, uh, it's allowed to be a church or a place of worship only. Uh, we found this out a few years back, about ten years ago, when we were, uh, going through the, um, some internal. External, um, uh, issues of, of valuation for, uh, within the Presbyterian. And, uh, that was a determining factor in the, in the value. You can't look at that saying, wow, you've got three, three large parcels right in the river. The land value would be great. Because it's right there on the river and, and very attractive and, uh, and value. It's limited to being a church. And so as that, it really is, um, has very little market value in the world, uh, for that, for that matter. And so anything we do for, for improvements has got a really difficult aspect of trying to improve the market value of our church at this point in time. Um, we are not opposed at all to being assessed improvements. We recognize that and we appreciate, uh, the improvements that have been made. Um, not necessarily everything we want it to be or, or anything like that, but, but what, some of the things has happened. It's, it really is a. Um, been an improvement. We recognize that, that, we appreciate that. But, uh, the assessment aspect of, of evaluation of that is where we're questioning our, where we're at.
April, could you speak to that change? I know there's a couple onsite things.
Yeah, absolutely. So this parcel does not, is not a residential parcel, so it would not get those caps. Um, there was an increase from the preliminary assessment out to, uh, the final assessment amount. So the preliminary assessment amount is based off of, um, preliminary design and an estimated cost of construction. The final assessment amount is based off of actual bid prices that are received and what is actually constructed. So, um, in looking at the different items you're assessed for, there was a slight reduction in that roadway corridor amount. Um, the water main assessment increased a little bit just to, due to bid pricing. Um, and the water main service is what, um, increased the most for your property. Um, preliminary assessment had one standard one inch, um, sewer service. It constructed with two six inch sewer services, um, because it's not residential. Um, and that's because, like you said, it's three lots. So theoretically, it could be split into two buildable lots. Um, and so we provided two water services that could accommodate, uh, future development if that were to happen. Um, the storm sewer assessment increased slightly too because of the actual bid prices. Um, should be noted that the, the property, um, does only utilize one of those services. Um, and, but the current assessment worksheet is assessing them for both.
And what is that total dollar amount?
Um, it is nine thousand six hundred, um, three dollars and ninety-five cents per service.
You know, again, we, we as a, uh, small church as well, uh, do not utilize. And we, we obviously need them. Uh, we certainly didn't need, I mean, maybe that's what the code said it had to be. We certainly didn't need larger, uh, um, services. Certainly don't need two because it's not gonna be developed into two, um, lots or three lots for that matter. And so those are maybe some things that should have been looked at and thought about before the additional expenses were put in to, to. You know, for future development, cause it's just not gonna happen. The, uh, uh, the aspect of it's just, you know, that. We're just really concerned the fact that that's a significant increase. Hopefully, and obviously now there's been some changes with what you've just kind of explained there. Uh, with the increasing it from, from a standard one inch to two, six inch. Um, services to that facility, to that area. But, uh, the other part that I'm concerned about is that if, we certainly didn't have a seventy-eight percent increase throughout the whole project. You know, that, so it's additional services were placed into that, into that location that really questioned whether they were, um, necessary. You know, if we wanted to, the other part, we, you know, if you say, okay, well, we would love to say, okay, we'll lit the three lots there. We'll limit that to the eight thousand dollar limit. And say this is a twenty-four thousand, uh, assessment limit. Unfortunately, it's not residential at this point in time, so that's probably not what you can do either. But that's what we're looking to, to say. We're, we're looking at, at a lot basis. Uh, there are three lots there. We'd be looking at, you know, going from the twenty-one thousand to twenty-four thousand. Um, and that seems reasonable. Um, but, uh, going to thirty-eight thousand does not seem to be a reasonable amount for that property. And putting in services that are never gonna be used. Uh, that, that could have been avoided. It had some discussions been made with us, uh, along the way, uh, before we. Before that was, uh, placed in there. And so unfortunately, that's some additional expenses that we didn't have control of, but we might have been able to assist this, the city in minimizing if at all possible. And I don't feel like that we wanna be paying for those.
Sure.
Uh, at this point in time, or any point in time for that matter. And I understand this, the letter given to you and gotten to the, the council also then initiates the four twenty-nine aspects of that. Clarification, maybe at your office at a later date to understand what four twenty-nine involves as far as from our standpoint. Or any, any, uh, property owner's standpoint would be beneficial, uh, either tonight or some other time in the near future.
Just, yeah, so, I'll just say, so the reason it's called four twenty-nine process is because of Minnesota statute that. Um, outlines the process is Minnesota statute four twenty-nine. So anybody, right? Um, can look that up and that outlines very clearly what that appeals process, um, needs to look like.
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll just add to that for clarification for everybody here and then, and counsel as well. Cause I'm, I'm sure as you're walking through this process, they're trying to understand next steps, cause April presented. The two properties and then hearing third, uh, hearing, um, this lot that is kinda similar to. The one that was the two lots, but really only the one is buildable. Um, I'd kinda compare this, uh, as a similar. Um, situation. So the four twenty-nine process, what kicks off that process for any property? Whether it's the lineal process, which you're hearing tonight of assessments determining that we have a cap on, or the appraisal process, which is what we heard for Scott and Daler. Um, is, is a written letter from the resident. That initiates the appeal or the objection of those assessments. Um, that letter has to be submitted to the city clerk, which is, is myself, um, in writing. And it has to be submitted to the city clerk in writing prior to the acceptance of the final assessment rule, which is what we're hearing tonight. Um, and so that's sent out to them in the initial final assessment hearing notice. Uh, that initiates the process, should the council choose not to do anything tonight. Um, when you have an appraisal involved, which is what the Scott and Daler process was under, was the appraisal process. Um, as you heard April clarify earlier, when you, when you're working through lineal foot pros- projects like this, the next step is an appraisal. Um, when you've already done the appraisal process, then the, the course of action, uh, for councils. Is to allow the four twenty-nine process to continue through. Um, because one of the first things that they would ask for is an appraisal. Um, and so that is the responsibility of the property owner to initiate the rest of that process through the third party, which is the court system. Um, and not the responsibility of the city, because we have already completed the appraisal process. So in the Scott and Daler one, it's the responsibility of the property owners to take it from here. Um, and hire their own legal representation. With this project, uh, because it was on lineal foot, there's not an appraisal that's been done. It's up to the council to determine, do you feel that in any of these properties, that you could be? It's up to the council to determine, do you feel that in any of these properties, that you could be able to justify, both for an appraisal, which would be the next step that you would, that we would have to pay for, um, and then also through the court system, that we have increased the value of that property enough to match that appraisal amount. So on our, in our assessment policy, we cap these all at eight thousand.
For residential.
For residential. And then for the, for, um, the non-residential, I'll say, because commercial probably isn't a great example. But, um, it's up to council to determine, or you would initiate it going to an appraisal after this. If you approve the assessment rules exactly as is, as presented, and anybody wanted to proceed through the appeal process, an appraisal would be the next step. Council has to make the decision with these properties as presented. Do you feel like that appraisal and the court system, um, you would be able to justify the benefit to the property? And so if I'm hearing Mark appropriately and you guys all saw, saw his letter, it is currently one parcel. They don't intend to split it as three parcels. Uh, so council would need to make the determination if they feel like, um, there'd be justification there for that second, uh, service would probably be the one, that would be the biggest question. And same with that, the other two parcels that April presented, which, um, the one didn't have any services to Riverside. And then the other one was not a buildable lot. And so those are specifically, and then, and then the, uh, church itself are the ones that, um, you, you would likely need to be able to show via appraisal. And then also the determination of the amounts of how we got to that exactly. And that we would be able to show that that benefit was increased by, by that amount. Does that help explain it? A really lengthy explanation for everyone here.
I appreciate that because it does give, uh, the council an opportunity to make adjustments at this point in time.
Correct.
Versus
The appraisal process reference earlier.
If not, there's, there's going to be a process both by the council and by any of the property owners, specifically the ones you listed at forty-one and forty-two and the church that would, uh, be, uh, extensive and, and, uh, time consuming for all parties.
Yes, that's a good way of putting it.
And council will have a discussion as soon as we close the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to testify on the Coner Road One project?
Members of the council, thank you for giving me an opportunity. My name is Steve Wilson. I live at seven sixteen Riverside Avenue North. I've lived there for forty-five years and I may be speaking out of turn. I'm not sure. I am very willing to pay eight thousand dollars for the assessments that went by my house, so I have no complaint on that. But there have been a few points of contention as the project has proceeded. The path was won. People along where I live in the seven hundred block and then to the north, many objected to that. I think I was the only one that didn't. I think it's a great addition, uh, to our community. But now we're getting down to mailboxes. Is this an inopportune time to bring that up?
Um, as opportune as, as ever, I suppose.
Okay, well.
Just understand that, uh, the US Postal Service has a different jurisdiction than the Sartell City Council.
I know. And I've had numerous emails, uh, in communication with the Minnesota, North Dakota Regional Consumer Affairs Director. And, um, I, I think I need a little help from the city and the city council. I've lived on that road for a long time and, um, know that it's a busy road. Really enjoy the improvements. And, but in talking to this person, um, in the post office, they keep changing their story as to why we need the cluster boxes. Initially, they said it was for the safety of the residents and then also the safety of the mail delivering person. So I took it upon myself to catch the delivery person who had been on vacation and caught up. And I said, do you see any, any changes that would cause us to want to put in cluster boxes instead of mailboxes along the section from fourth to twelfth? And she said, no, I don't understand it at all. There's no safety issues for me. She doesn't see any safety issues for the residents, the way she delivers the mail. And when I wrote back to the, uh, regional director, she said, well, since you're not buying that reason, I'm going to take our, our guidebook as to why these things need to go in. I'm going to take eight bullet points and send them back to you. And it was things that just didn't make sense. And we've got people on that road that if you go from Seventh Street to Eighth Street, they're going to walk out of their house to pick up their mail and they have to walk twelve hundred forty-five feet to get to the mailbox. That's four football fields. And, you know, everyone's going to be a little bit shorter. But we started doing that in Minnesota in December, in January, February. And it's not a safe condition. And one of the first things they say in their book is that when installing centralized delivery equipment such as CBUs, the mailboxes must be safely located so that customers are not required to travel an unreasonable distance to obtain their mail. Well, I don't know where you guys live, but do any of you walk five hundred feet to get to your mailbox? Or two hundred feet or close to twelve hundred? And there are a lot of people that have been there a long time. So we got sixty, seventy, eighty-year-old people that are going to be expected to walk along that busy street in slippery conditions and it's an accident waiting to happen. And I guess what I'd maybe like from the city is to say, we would be supportive for our residents to have a mailbox in front of their house. I've heard from some that there is some city support for that. I know that the postmaster, the current postmaster was in agreement that mailboxes in front of the homes would be acceptable. And it was a previous postmaster that came up with the idea of these cluster boxes, but they're not here anymore. So, um, if, if maybe I could make the request that the city or the city council put together a position statement that I can use with the USPS in trying to make them change their mind to say that we agree with some of the residents that the idea of traveling on Riverside Avenue in the gutter, walking great distances in the winter is ill-advised. And I think that city support might be, uh, very helpful in making the argument, uh, to the USPS. I know they're not an organization that's doing well financially, but I just don't want anybody hurt to go get the mail. Their brochure says, priority, you. And that's me and that's everybody here. Their title says, United States Postal Service, but they're not providing the service. They're not planning to provide the service that they used to. So in a thirteen-mile stretch from St. Cloud to Rice Bridge, we've got eight blocks that they want to put cluster boxes in. And that just doesn't seem right.
And, and we see it in a number of, uh, new neighborhoods especially. Any new neighborhood that, that I've saw go in, um, and I've had discussions with the post office, uh, because I unfortunately have one of the cluster boxes as well. I know some other council members do as well. I would, I would recognize, uh, your concern of safety. And that if, if there's a disability, um, that a resident has or an inability to make that distance, they will allow individual mailboxes to go in. And so that would be, again, something that a resident would need to take up individually with, I believe, our local post office, uh, to make that request. Uh, but we have saw them be accommodating to that.
And I know every new development that's gone in, when a person buys within that development, they know that's what they're getting.
Understood.
But, you know, we, uh, I've been there for forty-five years. I plan to be there for another twenty or twenty-five. And I'm gonna make it. But, uh, I know, I'm going to reach a point where it's not just a bad arm, but maybe it's kind of a bad leg too, and I'm still going to want to go get my mail. And, uh, there are a lot of people along that stretch that are of that opinion right now. And, uh, I'd like, I'd like to be safer.
Understood.
Thanks.
Thank you. Last call on anyone wishing to testify on the Coner Road One final assessment.
Again, my name is Diana Schmidt and I live at six thirteen Riverside Avenue North. And I'd just like to add to what this gentleman said. I use a walker. You've taken away my sidewalk. And for me to go across the street and use the path, I have to go down, um, bankment and then back up again. And that's really hard with a walker. My alley behind me, when it rains or when it starts to snow, is going to be impossible for me to get there. So whatever the city's deciding to do, if they could also look at handicap situations. Because if I didn't have my husband, I don't know how I'd get my mail. Thank you.
Understood. And again, um, the city council, city of Sartell is not deciding to put the banks in. That is solely on the US Postal Service. And again, in a situation like yours, I would absolutely encourage you to connect with the postal service. I have high confidence that they'll make a, uh, exception to allow a mailbox to be placed. But again, that is outside of our purview and our ability. Last call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council, lot to discuss on this one. We had two recommendations from staff. Thank you. On this one, maybe we take it one at a time. Any staff is, uh, is asking or recommending that we remove these two parcels from the assessment. Um, any discussion? Or consensus on that?
I would say let's remove it. It makes sense.
Have, uh, one voicing remove?
I have just a clarif- quite clarification. So if these have a number already attached to the assessment value and we remove them, that number just goes into our bonding amount? Or we have to rebond? Or how, how does it, where does it go?
If we remove an assessment from our final assessment hearing, where's that money go? Or where's it come from?
How's it covered?
How's it covered?
Oh, right. Um, yeah, the bond. Uh, we do, we do, uh, when we, when we bond, um, we have a contingency. So I'm sure that contingency would more than cover this parcel here and any gap that that creates.
But again, by removing it from an assessment, it goes on to, uh, general taxpayers.
Correct, yeah, ultimately.
Any other, um, uh, I guess voice of opposition or confirmation on this parcel being excluded or questions?
I tend to agree with Jeff with there, there being no access in the, the large granite wall there. I think it'd be fair to remove it.
Okay.
I'd agree.
Okay, we have consensus on that one. Parcel in front of us. Uh, the recommendation was to combine those under the eight thousand cap of the larger residential lot. Any objection to that?
No, I'd also agree to remove this one. I think in the case that if this lot was under the eight thousand limit, I think there would be a case to keep it in there. But I think with them being at that eight thousand max, um, I think it's, it's fair to see it as one with it being the same address.
I would agree too. It's, um, it, it does make sense. It's, it's a non-buildable lot. And it's a good example of why you should combine your, your properties, uh, property IDs together into one. Uh, this situation can come up, but you know, that's, that's not for the city to decide.
Any other thoughts?
I'd agree with no, um, sewer water hookup. I think the precedent has been set with the, the other properties with, um, smaller parcels across the street as well.
And then the third is, uh, the church, uh, property situation, uh, that staff was making some recommendations on. I guess on, on that one, I'll maybe start, uh, a conversation of the additional nine thousand, get it right, nine thousand six hundred three dollars and ninety-five cents? If that was added to the project, um, and, and not needed, I guess I look at it two ways. One is remove it from the assessment. Or two, and probably what I'm more inclined on is, um, how do we set that as a deferred assessment? And, and the reason I guess I lean to that is, is we heard tonight that this is deeded property and, and based off the, the visual responses from staff, I don't know if that was a known item. And so I'd prefer, I prefer that it goes through the four twenty-nine process to understand that. What I would hate for us to do is to remove all and find out five years from now that that's a developable lot. And the rest of the city, um, took on the burden for that cost. And so I, I, I guess I'm not an attorney and I don't know how to understand the, is it deeded that way? Is it not deeded that way? I tend to agree that it is, understand that it's deeded that way, but I would, um, rather a legal decision be made on that.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying. So it is, it's all one PID, so we would have to approve tonight as is. But maybe if you could, April, I'm kind of looking at you for final certification of these assessment roles. I just want to make sure that if we were to find out and confirm that the deed does not allow it to be split and
Or any other use other than a church.
Or any other use than a church that you would then agree with removing that second service off.
That would be my thought on it. I, I, I feel like that's fair. If we, if we find that it is, um, a, able to be split off at some point and, and whether it's same use or different use, um, there's a value, there's an inherent value created there and we would want that property to cover that value that's created.
Yeah, and as I mentioned in explaining the process, um, that would be what an appraisal or, or a court system would look at too. And so, um, yeah, if the court system saw that this could be split into multiple lots, they would likely be able to see the, the benefit. But, um, if the deed clearly states that it can't be, that's a, a much different conversation. So I think just making sure you, in your motion, make the flexibility for staff to determine that outside of here so that we can certify it appropriately.
I think, you know, something with that is, um, I know, you know, a hundred years ago, they could put things in deeds. I don't want to get my real estate license years ago. The stuff that they could put in year, years ago, it's, it's discriminatory. It's just not true. I would question if it's in the deed, is it even legal? And it's, you know, whether it can or not, there may be a time also when, uh, maybe your church wants to expand and that church becomes too small. Then, then what are you going to do with the property? You know, is it going to be still a part of the church? Um, I, I would somewhat question if that's even legal anymore, but I'm not a lawyer, so please don't take that. But if it, if it's only one property, I would say that, you know, I, I don't see the purpose of having two, two water connections on there. I would agree with that.
And again, I think the appraisal process through four twenty-nine would determine or help flush out that deed validity. And again, I think the appraisal process through four twenty-nine would determine or help flush out that deed validity.
Yeah, I think even just talking to our city attorney, they could probably clarify that or title company in town.
Other thoughts on the church example?
No, I agree with what you said. It's, if we can determine what was just discussed, I think it's fair to waive it. But if it's able to be expanded, I would want to be able to capture that at a later time if possible.
I guess I understand planning for future, possibility for future hookup or need. But as it is today, there's one structure on one lot or PID and so I feel like it's a little, I don't know. I think the church went into it with the understanding they would be paying for one. They got two. So I guess I'm, I'm questioning going through a court process for, call it ten thousand dollars. I guess that's where my head is.
That was an appraisal cost, a commercial appraisal. Isn't that about ten thousand to be in there? So it'd be kind of a pointless process, right?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have an exact quote for an appraisal, but that, but yes, that is something that council has to decide is, is what's that process worth in, in that second connection?
Yeah, that was my, I was concerned was, you know, what, what is the process of legally and appraising? I mean, time we spend just researching this portion of this will probably be in excess of, of the amount. I just want to be cogn- cognizant of that cost running amok where we should just say, you know.
If, if it's a five oh one C three now, they don't pay property tax. How can we assess some property tax? That doesn't make sense.
So that is, that is outside our jurisdiction.
Do we need maybe some more clarification on this from our legal?
No, you can, you can assess it, but that's, that's based on the, on the four twenty-nine state statute. So they don't pay property taxes, but they do pay for pro- property or for property improvements and road projects.
I guess do we have to try and find a, a, a middle ground there? And I agree not throw money, especially legal money to get to the same net, net outcome. Do we have an ability to put that nine thousand as deferred? And, and it would sit there as deferred and if the property ever developed out, it would enact. If not, it would cancel after thirty years. I, I mean, again, my thought there or essence there is to get to the same outcome that if, hey, they find out through their own legal process that the deed it can sell, they want to sell, great. It's equitable. If not, it cancels out.
I, as you were saying that initially, it was kind of going on the same road of where we almost have a, an actual special assessment and then, or a, a, a real-time special assessment and then the deferred assessment. I wonder if perhaps the motion could be to approve the assessment rolls with, you know, the two properties you've already addressed and this one with the second connection removed off with the understanding of it being a development agreement that would be recorded to the property in the event of future development. Because it's, we can't really do a deferred assessment like a normal deferred assessment process because there's not two PID's. But I think if the church feels confident that, hey, this is never going to get redeveloped, I'm certain they'd probably be willing to sign a development agreement that would get recorded to the property with this assessment amount as the primary principal amount to that DA.
And that doesn't fall under our thirty-year rule?
No, the DA, actually, if you recorded the DA to the property, it would just, it would be on that whole PID and whenever they sell, you'd have to word the DA and we'd have our legal team help with that on, on. I don't think it'd have to be super complicated if you ever develop. Scott, you can, you'd work on those more often.
So Ryan and Jeff, maybe we could relate a little bit more to like the township when we talk about declaration restrictions? I think we could do something similar to that, that where just, it's, it's recorded with that specific parcel. If things change, then that restriction comes due and it's addressed at that time. So pending on, you know, some support from legal to make sure that everything is, is addressed accordingly. I think that would be an option.
And again, the goal being keep our legal bill extremely low. For everyone.
And just remember when the West Side project goes, if we add a sewer service there, there would be a sewer, sewer service added to that lot or not. So that's a decision that'll have to be made during that project. Because that sewer is in the alley and that'll be part of that West Side project.
Looking forward to the more assessment discussions.
Yeah, and, and that, I mean, that'll be a little bit different because it's in an alley versus a roadway with a retaining wall and some other impacts, but.
All right. Who wants to take a stab at the motion?
The holy water assessment.
Separation church and state too.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessment call with the exception of the properties noted. Number one being the one on the screen. One in, one in.
One and two.
Lots, one and two.
One and two. Since they are not in the, not, don't have any hookups with this project. Lot ID's seven oh four, oh, excuse me, what?
You already switched.
Which, which numbers is it? Fifty and?
Fifty-one and fifty.
Fifty-one and fifty. Treating that as one property and then creating a developers agreement for the second water hookup for the church that would be recorded with the county.
In clarification, we'll call it a sewer hookup rather than water hookup?
Water, but just, correct. So essentially moving that second water service from this assessment role to be included with a DA, reducing their assessment down then to twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty and forty-six cents.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're going to have to help me in the minutes.
Council, I'm looking for a second on that. I will not be repeating it.
Could you clarify that for me? I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and second. Summary, the first two lots that we reviewed are being taken off. On our screen is being combined to fall under the eight thousand cap and the nine thousand six hundred dollar fee for the church is being put into a DA. Make sure everyone understands that is the motion in front of us. We have a second. Are there any other discussion points or questions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay as we continue on. New business, we have moratorium on stockpiles. Or you can depart if you have more riveting things to do at seven thirty on a Monday night. Thank you again for the feedback and conversations. We'll give them just a moment here.